This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the August 8, 2023 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education Order at 6:00 P.M. Before we get started in the meeting, I'd just like to have a couple of words. First thing I'd do is like to welcome the class of 2024 coming into this year. I'd also like just a couple of things for people who may be new to how we do things here. If you're new to the school system, if you've just moved into town, we meet every second Thursday of the month, usually around 6:30 at evening, and it's usually here. It is posted, so if there are changes, you'll have advance notice and be able to make adjustments to your schedule. If you are... If you have a student that's changing schools, if they're going from, say, Green Acres to the middle school or the middle school to the high school, just know that everything kind of remains the same if you have questions. You can go to the teacher, you can go to the administrator, and Mr. Stark is also available if there are questions. So the way things happen don't change, it's just a different building, different people, but the same titles, so it's really a simple process. If you have any other questions about how things work and you're new to the system, or if you're not new to the system and how things work, Mr. Stark is always available. Other than that, I'd like to have a motion to approve the June 8, 2023 Board of Education regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
The second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, moving to public comment, for those, again, who are new to the system, there are two sections of public comment that we have at every meeting. The first session of public comment is open to everyone to talk about anything, agenda or non-agenda item. You have five minutes, you come up, you state your name, your address, make your statement. As a reminder, public comment is generally not a question-answer. It is for public comment so that we can discuss some of the... Some of the things you bring up that we may not know about, or we may need to discuss to gather information to answer correctly. The second public comment, which comes later in the meeting, is about agenda items only. So if you have a non-agenda item, I would suggest that you do it now during this portion because you will not be able to do it later in the meeting. So we will open up to public comments right now. Can you just state your name, please, and your address?
Leonda Ferma, 62 Juniper Drive, North Haven.
Okay.
And I'm here on behalf of the Carden Club. We have our annual scarecrow contest, this one is on October 21st, and we have a contest for the children. And we have been someone... We would like to be able to put the posters in the schools. We have not been able to access anybody from the administration to help us with this. So I said I would come to this meeting and put forth our claim, and is this something that we can do?
You haven't been able to access anybody you haven't called, or you haven't been able to reach anybody?
People have tried to call, people have been off the telephone tree and the whole thing. And I said, "Let's just... I'll go to the meeting and I'll put the request there."
Do you want Russ to address that?
What we are asking for is permission. Permission to be able to put the posters in the schools. I don't think we have permission to do that.
You're looking to put them into all the schools?
Well, primarily, it would be the elementary schools. It's for the contest on October 21st, and then we have a parade. And I don't know if you're familiar with what we do, but it's pretty successful every year. And we'd like to have all the children be aware of what we're doing, and we thought that perhaps this was the way to do it. So what I'm asking for is permission to be able to do this.
Okay. Mr. Stark will be in his office tomorrow. He'll give you a number you can reach him at, and then he'll tell you exactly how to go about what you need to submit, and I'm sure you guys can work something out without any issue.
So we can get through to you.
It's gonna be... Mr. Stark will... Joyce will give you Mr. Stark's number.
Okay, that'll be great.
And you just get right to the superintendent, and he will take care of that issue for you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for non-agenda? Yeah, come on.
Did I have that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's okay, take your time.
Hi, I just kind of come as a mom.
You could just state your name for us, please?
Nicole Feely.
And your address? Thank you.
I read an article about the sidewalk that was mentioned at the previous Board of Ed meeting that I attended. And I know you can't do questions and answers, so I'm just more a statement. The article stated that the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion doesn't stop at the Pride Festival and continued on the campus of the middle school and high school. So I'm more wondering if there was a time before that that the middle school and high school didn't have values, diversity, equity, and inclusion? Because for me personally, the flag does not include all, and the values don't align with all people. And I wanted to know how artwork with sidewalks is the way to include because not all students do participate in the group, club, or team, so that is still excluded. And if we do have a concern with children in town not feeling included or like equals, then like you guys, I agree, we have a very real problem, but time and money on a sidewalk won't fix that. And if you did have a way to measure the students of North Haven Public Schools' ability to be respectful, inclusive, and diverse, I'm just wondering what that was and how we'll continue to measure the success of all the values that the celebration and path to belonging are supposed to be made. I did email Mr. Stark, he did email me back, and he said he believes the board would provide an update when they've ironed out the details. I'm hoping for that update, thank you.
I can give you a little bit. I can give you a little bit. It's super fluid right now because there are so many things to consider. It was an idea that was discussed between myself and Amanda Gabriel to include everybody. One of the things that I just want to make very clear is that it seems like everybody thinks that this is a pride sidewalk or an equity. It's not, it's an inclusive sidewalk for everyone. And when we talk about there are some kids who aren't in clubs or teams or 100%, not everyone participates in whatever, whether they don't want to or for whatever the reason.
Right.
Some of those reasons are also that maybe that student isn't aware of what's out there.
Correct.
So as different clubs post on the sidewalk, in whatever fashion it ends up to be, it just is a reminder to these students that, "Oh, there is something there that's available for me," or "I didn't know we did that." That's what the idea behind the sidewalk was, to make sure that everybody...
It was just the statement and how it was written that put it both together.
Again, I don't... I'm not gonna disagree with you, and it can be taken in many different ways. The real story is right here at this meeting.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just sign in, please.
I'm Lee Savvy, Pete Westerly Road. I'm an education consultant, which is sometimes a dirty word in the education space, but I work with people in your roles all across the country, and I see firsthand how much work you put into all of the work that you're doing and the commitment and the collaboration. And I just appreciate that and want to say thank you, and hope you all are heading into a really great school year. I'm a parent in North Haven, and my oldest will be going to kindergarten next year. And so I've recently started to come to meetings and pay more attention. And there's two things that I am looking forward to hearing more about this year. One is the DEI work that's already been underway, and I'm just excited to hear more of that. And I think that the louder the district can be, then the less burden that there needs to be on teachers who are really on the front line every day, doing their best to teach students. And the second thing is I'm really interested to hear more about the literacy work that the district is doing, knowing that I know we applied for the waiver for the Rights to Read Act. And I totally appreciate all the considerations and complexities of state policy and how that trickles down to a district like North Haven. But I also hope we can lean into the spirit of the act and really think about the ways in which we can increase literacy instruction and make sure that all students are getting access to the instruction they need to make sure that we're closing those achievement gaps. And I think high-quality instructional materials and content-based professional learning is proven to close those gaps, and so I hope we can, yeah, consider more ways to do that here. I'm excited to hear more throughout the year, so thank you again.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else for non-agenda? Yeah? Doesn't... Whoever, doesn't matter. You both have your time.
Hi, I'm Victoria Bernardo, I live at Two Kings Highway in North Haven. I have two little ones, my both kids are both in... My daughter's going into third grade, and my son is starting kindergarten, he was in the 3J program. I just wanted to bring something up that was discussed at the April meeting. I know that the diversity, inclusion, teacher, one of her first titles, I'm sorry, I got the correct title, for the high school spoke and brought up some topics that they were discussing. And one of the board members had said that that was a wonderful thing, which it is, and that it should be started down at the elementary level, not wait till middle and high school. So as a mother of two small children in the elementary school, I just want to know before anything like that is brought, just because it hasn't really been discussed since the April meeting, if anything is gonna be brought into the elementary school in a diversity, inclusion format, what that will look like at the elementary level, and what sort of topics would be discussed? And how would they be discussed? Would they be age-appropriate? Bringing those things down to the elementary level, I do want to... I just want to know how the elementary school is handling diversity and inclusion, if that is discussed.
Okay.
Starting at kindergarten.
Well, right now, it started last year. And because it was a lot of communication back and forth between the instructor and the students and where they wanted to go with the program, so it was all a discovery in that room. So they haven't formalized any pattern of discussion or anything which we were asking for at the time. So before that goes anywhere downward in scale, we need to just kind of figure out where it's at right now. So it's gonna continue, and you know, the kids like it and they're enjoying it, so that's gonna continue, and it'll be more... I don't want to say formulated, but it'll be more in line to look at and say, "Okay, these are kind of the things we're discussing." And even within the discussion, that's fluid, you know, those change. So you're never gonna get a list of, "Well, it's only this and exactly that," and it'll stop exactly here because those things are fluid. But it'll be more put together before it advances through, if it advances through.
Before it comes to the end of the school.
Yeah, there's a ways to go, yeah, there's a ways to go. Yeah, and everything has to come here first before it goes down. So there's a little ways to go, but we're working on it.
Can I just...
Sure.
Real quick, one really good way of staying keyed in to what's happening at your home school is talking to your school admin, too. Like, if you're concerned about anything, like a really good place to start is your school principal. And I know that, like, I can't speak for the whole board, but from my perspective, I think age-appropriate is a thing. Nobody wants fourth graders reading Fifty Shades of Grey. I don't think that's, like, on anybody's radar here. But we have competent and capable professionals that do review this work, and I thank our teachers and our coordinators and our admins who are reviewing and constantly thinking about different ways where we can introduce things in an age-appropriate way at all the different levels.
Anybody else? Scott, hold on one second. Please, thank you. Scott, you'll get up to it.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Barrett, One Christopher Drive. Since this board met the last time back in June, there was an article that came out in the North Haven Patch about the North Haven Schools hiring, or at least advertising that they needed to hire for 48 teachings and staff positions. And that's in contrast with the referendum vote that I believe proved three teaching positions and three coaching positions.
Can I... Where was that article from?
The North Haven Patch.
Said we needed 48?
Forty-eight, yes, and I can list them for you if you choose. Or I can share it with you.
That's news to both myself and the superintendent.
Okay, one administrator, seven athletic and activities positions, seven elementary school teaching positions, seven high school teaching, one maintenance and custodial, five middle school teaching, one security, eight student support services, three substitute, three summer school, one support staff, one technology, and three tutors. Now, I am not in any way implying anything nefarious here because I recognize that in previous years, there may have been vacancies that may not have been filled. During the last academic year, there were certainly vacancies that you all announced, either as a result of someone resigning and moving on, or somebody retiring. I think there was even one person that was let go, so vacancies happen. I guess in the interest of absolute transparency, I'm just... I would like to make a suggestion that a report be generated during the summer months, when things were a little bit, you know, calmer, that just provides information to the public about the number of positions that were vacated during, for example, the 2022-2023 academic year. And then as of the first day of this next school year, which is 2324, what is the status of those positions? And if they've been filled, when were they filled? For the new positions, what is the status? Those are the ones that were approved by the budget. And then things happen. And what if there's a new... In addition to those new positions that were approved by the budget, what if there are additional things that needed to be added? I would imagine it would have to go through a vote of the Board of Education, but let's have a different section for that. And then last but not least, those positions that were vacated in previous years and not filled. And then again, this spreadsheet, I'm sure Patrick, you have, you know, for your own working... is a working document, but to the extent that it could be provided at the beginning of the school year and then updated maybe in January prior to the budget workshops, I think that would go a long way towards really explaining to the public just the fluid nature of how, you know, some of these positions are filled and some of them remain empty, and exactly how that happens throughout the year. So I think that that's just a suggestion for you all to consider and discuss. And then the second point that I'd like to bring up, as you all know, the supernumerary ordinance was extended for another five years. I'm thrilled that the town meeting voted to approve that. But I guess I'm just trying to get an understanding for the working relationship between this board and the police chief, where the police chief actually dictates exactly how the supernumeraries, who report to him as part of his overall police department, how they function. But in the end, it is this board that is responsible for student safety. And so I'm just wondering to what extent... There are some towns that have gone as far as to develop a memorandum of understanding. I'm not suggesting that. But I think some open and transparent discussion about exactly what is the working relationship between a supernumerary in a given school and, say, the administrators in that school, and exactly what is and is not part of the supernumerary's role in that particular school, whether it's appropriate for a supernumerary to address a student's parents without involving an administrator, just as an example. So again, in light of some of the things that happened in Hamden very recently, I just wanted to call this to your attention, and I think that it's another issue that I would love, as a citizen of our town, to be hearing more about, not just, you know, the Person of the Week in our local paper, but a real discussion among our elected board members of the role of the supernumeraries in our school, which is a tremendously valuable resource.
I agree, I would think that the first step you should take is police commission meeting and ask them directly. And then from there, whatever information that you deem is... Needs more discussion, bring it here. But I think we're going a little bit backwards. If you want us to talk about supernumeraries, what... How the chief wants to direct them, how they want to approach parents, I think you need to talk to the police commission first, then find out what you want to speak about in more detail here, and we'd be glad to do it.
Well, again, what I understand, the role of the Board of Education is to actually pass policies, discuss, and ultimately pass policies that direct our...
But you're also asking me how the supernumeraries are directed by the chief. And I'm obviously not gonna get into that at all.
Not so much by the chief, as much as the working relationship with the administrators, which are under your...
And again, you should direct that to the police commission first, and if you have anything further that you would like to talk about and we weren't happy to discuss it. But I think that would do a lot to clarify some of the questions that you had. Other than that, we'll take the rest into...
So can the supernumerary program, as it functions in our school system, become a regular topic among the Board of Education? And so that we can, in the public, be hearing about the details, not to the extent that it violates anyone's privacy, but to the extent that we can hear in more detail exactly the functioning of the supernumerary program in our school system?
The functioning of that program mostly is directly... Let me take that back. Has a lot to do with communication with the students, which is not something we can talk about.
But you can talk about the impact, correct?
Yeah, they're having a good impact. I mean, I don't know if you sound sarcastic about it, but yeah, their impact is positive, it's been good. I can't discuss who they've had contact with or why, so...
Do you have any metrics that would be anonymous, that could be shared with the public so that you have some objective way to back up what you're saying? It is good?
Well... The metric we use is by the people that are directly associated with that contact as they report back to us that it was favorable. So there is no metric that really... It's a very difficult metric to share because I'm taking information, and you could always say, "Well, where'd you get that from?" "Oh, I can't tell you," because it's private. So it's difficult, other than to say that it is working. It was just voted in again, so obviously the people of the community want it because they know it works. And that's really where we're at with it. I can't get into too much more detail than that with it.
So can I... Because I could ask Patrick, after the town meeting held, when you brought this up there as well, I could ask Patrick if there were any complaints against our supernumeraries. And Patrick, that was zero, correct?
Zero, right.
Over the course of five years. So that's like quantitative data, right? There have been zero complaints about this program over the course of five years. And then there's also anecdotal qualitative data. When, like, I personally speak with folks about the impact of the supernumerary program at the elementary, middle, and high school level often, especially since... Especially in the initial year that it was implemented. And universally, folks said, you know, "These folks are helpful, they are not overstepping bounds, et cetera." And just one final thing, Nancy, is that when the supernumerary program was implemented, we did update the... I don't know if it was a statute or a whatever, to make sure that the supernumeraries were gonna be working as, like, hand in glove with our school district. So that was something that was amended at the time the program was implemented five years ago.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. What is it that this board has created in the form of a policy that defines the working relationship between the school administrators and the supernumeraries? I don't know whether that's...
We do not have one specific lock-on policy. It's based on constant communication between the police department and the school system.
Right, I guess I'm asking, what is Amanda referring to?
When it was... I think, I believe you were there during my interview with the DTC when Sally brought this up as well. She stated that there was additional language added five years ago stating that the supernumeraries are not to discipline students, and that is correct. We worked together with one another to make sure that the supernumeraries were going to be part of the community and not... Not... They're members of the community, not a scary force, so...
Yeah, so that's the language of the ordinance.
The ordinance, that's the word I was...
Yeah, so that's part of, you know, kind of our town... Not necessarily our town charter, but it's a separate set of guidelines or ordinances. I guess what I'm asking is what is it that the Board of Education, independent of the town, has done to kind of codify this working relationship so that you, as Board of Ed members, are providing policies that guide the administrators and make it a very clearly defined working relationship? I understand you think it's working great, but I guess I'm just trying to understand to what extent you have kind of made that something that is, you know, either part of your bylaws or part of something that you are proposing as a policy. So again, just something for your consideration as part of your relationship with the police department, but also in upholding your responsibility to ensure security and safety of our schools.
Well, we are upholding the security of the school, and we are responsible for that. And there hasn't really been any outstanding issue with that, unless there's an outstanding issue that you know that we don't.
Well, I certainly know that there was an uptick as a result of...
Uptick of what?
Uptick of suspensions and other issues within the school, and Patrick, you can certainly speak to this, during the pandemic and following the pandemic. So again, I think that that is something...
That is not a supernumerary function.
Again, in some cases it was, and we don't need to get into the...
All right, but we'll take that all consideration, and we'll look at that in the future.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, please, anybody else? Scott? I know Scott was... Anna Scott, you know?
Some of the... I walked in late, and I apologize. Some of this may have already been addressed if someone came up here and talked about the path of community. Has anything else been... I didn't see it on the agenda, so I was just wondering.
I put it off the agenda today because we were really light today.
Yeah.
There's actually one more member here today, and we didn't know was gonna be here. So I didn't think it was appropriate to bring it up because it wasn't ripe for discussion with only, you know, two-thirds of the board. We talked about it briefly. I don't know if you caught the tail end of it or not, but I basically said that it is, you know, it's open for everyone, and we've had this discussion before. Any school, teen, club, choir, play, you know, all these... Whatever the school's involved, and the kids are involved with, in some form or fashion, we're still not exactly sure how it's gonna be done yet. To put it out there so that people who maybe aren't involved in anything can look at it and say, "Oh, I didn't know we had that particular club," or they are open to take people in for tryouts in music and band, or whatever the case is. And that's really where we're at. It's really early in the discussion, and we're trying to figure out the best way to do it.
Yeah, and so I guess I'm up here... Because I went back and watched that part of the June meeting, and I felt like it was, like... Maybe I don't understand how the board works, but it was presented, voted on, and passed, right then and there?
No.
No?
No, no, no. It was presented...
Yeah.
It was the first time that board members, other than me and Amanda, had even heard about it.
Right.
So I didn't ask for an approval. What I asked for is to move it forward so that we can look at it, have submissions done. All submissions have to be done through the board, and we're still trying to figure out the best way to present all these clubs and committees on that sidewalk. We're still not 100% sure. Paint, size, not paint, bigger, smaller, we're really not 100% sure. There's a lot that goes into it, and I burdened the board with it without their prior knowledge. without their prior knowledge, mostly because I wanted to get their immediate reaction without the month-long thought of all the different things. Sometimes it's easier to, to get some ideas out fresh instead of thinking about it, because then you start rationalizing things or un-rationalizing things over a period of time. So right now, we're really just getting it together. Amanda's doing a lot of work, trying to get some, the cost and, and how we can do it, how we would maintain it. There's a lot of things to discuss, and we are a ways from.
And have submissions been, um.
Nothing's been looked at yet.
Submitted yet?
Nothing's been looked at by the, nothing's been looked at by the board yet.
There has been, though, submissions.
Well, nothing's been looked at, nothing's been presented to the board.
So this is where I'm a little, um, during the meeting, it, you stated that no one else knew about it, and it was a hush, hush thing until that meeting.
Well, it wasn't really, I wouldn't say hush, hush sounds to see, like I'm trying to see people.
However, Amanda said there were groups, there were clubs that were already interested.
Yeah.
But no one else, how did those groups find out?
That's how, that's how it starts.
That's my fault.
Well, the fact remained, the fact remains that if clubs don't come to us, or kids don't come to us.
They don't know about it.
If kids, if you let me finish, Anna, if kids don't come to us, how do we even know they want it? So it was talked about very casually, then we created the idea. Ideas, we just don't sit at home and say, what can we do with that sidewalk? What can we do with it? There, there's conversation that happens with the clubs.
I understand, but if I could finish what I'm trying to say.
Sure, of course you can.
I'm trying to say that there, on that, there was a timeline that has, now has changed, but those groups or clubs that already knew about it in June had all this time to get their submissions ready. When, when are the other kids going to find out and, and get their submissions ready? Now, they're going to be rushed to get theirs ready.
They're not, no, no one's being rushed.
Compared, well.
No one's being rushed. That's why we haven't looked at anything.
Okay.
That's why we haven't looked at anything.
And no one has addressed with me the, what I said last time about all these clubs and these groups, and now the kids that are not part of anything have to go walk this path during recess or, or whatever, and see all these clubs, all these groups that they're not a part of. They already see it in school all day long. Why do we need a path of unity? We're North Haven, we're the Nighthawks.
Why do we not?
Why do we need this path?
I, 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 I'm trying to, I'm trying to gather what you're saying. If, if the student doesn't want to be involved in anything, that's fine. No one's forcing anybody to be involved in anything.
I'm not saying they're forced to be involved in it.
I'm not, I'm not saying they're, I'm not forcing anybody to do anything. I'm saying if the student chooses not to be involved.
Right.
You're saying because there are kids that aren't involved? Yes, there are. There's plenty of kids that aren't involved.
You told me the last time I was here that you would look into how to include those children.
Right, and the way, the way I'm trying to include those children is as they walk to that path, and they see clubs that maybe they didn't even know existed, maybe they want to join that club. I can't, you know, if you have three, three hundred clubs, I'm supposed to shut down conversation about those clubs because there's a child that doesn't want to be, or a student that doesn't want to be, excuse me, involved in a club? That's, if you don't want to be involved, that's fine. Nobody's forcing anybody to do anything. And I don't see where, if we celebrate the clubs that we do have, that it's, we're celebrating it, we're selling, we're celebrating that to put it in the face of the kid that's not involved. That's not the case at all, I don't.
I think you're celebrating more division than anything.
Oh.
That's my opinion.
Oh, that's fine. And you can have your opinion, you can have your opinion. I don't know how, I don't understand that opinion myself, but.
The admin asked if they thought this was a good idea?
Who?
The administrators.
No, it, it's not done yet. They will be part of the conversation as we move forward.
No, but it's already being discussed, so are they?
As we move forward, and we decide if we'd like to do it or not, as a board, we will address the administrators. It's too early in the process right now, because we need to know what we're doing. So what am I supposed to, I, I, there's nothing sound enough to present to them.
Okay. I just think there's much better things to be spending your time with as a board. There's a lot more issues.
We spend our time on all the issues.
A lot of your time, you said it.
We, it is, but we spend our time on a lot, on all the issues.
I know you do, and I appreciate you guys giving your time for that, but this is going to take up a lot of time, a lot of effort.
That's fine.
And like I said last time, I believe that kids will go and jump that fence and do things to that pathway.
Which is part of the consideration that we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Which is why we're discussing whether, how, what the best way to lay it out is.
Maybe somebody will let me know how you're gonna, you said you were gonna let me know how you're gonna try and include other kids?
I, I told you, I would include anybody who wants to be included, and.
You told me you were gonna come up with ideas.
Of how to be included, yeah, because one of the ideas is to have it out there so kids can see what's out there. Maybe they don't know all the clubs that are out there. I, you know, all I can do is offer it to the kid and say, this is what we're doing. This is what we like to do. Do you want to be a part of it? I can't make anybody be a part of it.
Hi, I'm Scott Friedman, 17 Cooper Road. I want to thank you all as we enter a new school year for your service on the board. I have a little bit of insight into what goes into it, and it seems to be an incredible service to the community and a fair amount of work. I want to speak to the fact that the paths of longing I was hoping to see on the agenda tonight, I would like to see it, you know, proceed. I think that there certainly should be ways to include folks who are not a member of any club, and I think that there will be. But I also think that there's a number of folks in the community who have been looking for ways to make sure they're seen at school, and, you know, I think that we should proceed with it. I actually sort of started to come up here for the sole purpose to say that 6:00 PM meetings are incredibly hard for working parents. You know, I got here late, and I missed a couple of public comments, and, you know, I wanted to be here for them. But I also just generally wanted to thank you as we start a new year. One thing I did want to point out is that we're missing a student representative, and I think that we should move to electing that student representative in the prior year so that they can get started with you all in August. So, thank you.
We're missing both student reps right now.
What's that?
We're missing both student reps right now, so trying to get on that. Right, but, right. Normally, junior would come in as a senior, but the junior decided not to continue, so we were short by that. Anybody else? Yeah, I see anybody, we'll move on. We want to do consent agenda. Uh, the resignation of Rose Corano, administrative assistant, Monuise Elementary School. The resignation of Erica Hocking, SRBI interventionist at North Haven High School. The resignation of Kayla Metzger, grade four teacher, Clintonville Elementary School. The resignation of Oxa Cologne, science teacher at North Haven High School. Resignation of Howard Wardlow, director of business operations and human resources. Lynn Pandolfi, resignation? Resignation of Lynn Pandolfi, paraprofessional at Monuise Elementary School. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for their service to the district, but most, mostly I wanted to speak on Howard for a moment if I could. I know he's not here tonight. But from a board member's perspective, from somebody who's been here, I think he's the third person in that position that I've worked with since I've been on the board, and the difference in the, I mean, as a board member, we all spend a lot of time looking at the budgets and trying to understand the budgets, and the difference that he made simply alone in the way that the budget is presented to the board for those January meetings, um, I can't, I, I really, I can't quantify how many hours of time that has saved and how many questions that has preemptively resolved, uh, so I wanted to say thank you to him for that, and, um, I wish we could make him stay, I know we can't, but for somebody who's worked with him closely and spoken to him, and he's been, uh, I guess the best way I could have been, he's been a true benefit to our district, and, uh, we will sorely miss him.
Yeah, if I can just add to that, too, like, Howard will for sure be missed. He was a nerd, and I mean that in the nicest way possible. Um, he, he knew how to anticipate if it was above a certain percentage threshold that he needed to provide an, like, an example to us as to why it was happening. He worked very hard for us. So did all of the teachers, administrative assistants, um, paraprofessionals and interventionists as well, so I wanted to say thank you to everybody who resigned for their service, and I want to wish our teachers who are here a great school year. We always see a bunch of resignations in Au- August, and I'm a little bit, so this is not atypical, a, a list this long, but, you know, we did hear at the June meeting, Randy talked about last year being one of the most trying years on record, because people are feeling like it should be back to normal, and we're sort of dealing with a fundamental difference and a fundamental shift. So I'm just wondering, like, do we have a plan to start off the year, like, really positively, for our wonderful world-class teachers?
So before the school year ended, I, I put out a survey for the, for the certified staff to see how they wanted to open the new school year. You know, prior to me under, uh, when Dr. Conan was here, he, he always had a convocation, and many districts have a convocation. So I, uh, last, last two or three years, I put out a survey to see if staff would be interested in participating in a convocation, or having a speaker come, or any, or, you know, spending time in their classrooms and, uh, in their buildings, talking to colleagues, planning, that, that type of thing. And overwhelmingly, 75% plus wanted time in their buildings, time with their colleagues, time to get ready for children. So I think it's important to hear from our staff and not just plan things that we think that they want, uh, really to hear from them. So I'm more than happy to give them the time to do that. We do have, you know, the normal opening-type faculty meetings and data presentations and those types of things, but we make sure that we set aside time for them, uh, for their own, to, to get back into the swing of things, because it's, they're welcoming the students in their classrooms, so they, they gotta be ready for them. So, and we also, can I just jump in on one more thing? Melinda and I often meet with the union presidents. We have really great relationships with them. The building admins, uh, have building reps in each of their buildings, uh, for, for the different unions, and we have really open dialogue and a very positive relationship with all of them, and we want to, we have great teachers, we want to keep them. I think when it's my report, I have about 10 new teachers to welcome. Um, I'd like to start making a habit of welcoming the new folks that are coming into district at each board meeting, just to celebrate them, because we're excited to have them. Uh, and I think it's a lot to do with the little things as well. You know, we give out personalized tenure certificates for our teachers. We give out penance when they've been here 20, 25, 30, 35 years, and, you know, the administrators welcome, celebrate them at faculty meetings. So I think those little things go a long way, and when you look around in their classrooms, all those penance are still hanging up, and, and, or they'll say thank you when Melinda and I stop in. So I, we just try to celebrate our, our teachers as much as we can.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Hi.
So.
So the next on the agenda is the appointment of Anthony Giamede as the new assistant principal at North Haven Middle School. I just want to say a little bit to the board about Anthony. He's been with us, I just verified, this is his 24th year in district. Uh, he spent all of it at the middle school, uh, 20 years as a counselor, and the last three years as an administrative intern and dean of students. So, um, I mean, most people know him as Mr. G, and, and, you know, when you mention his name, people just smile about him, uh, whether it's adults or children. So, uh, we're really excited that he is taking on this administrative role in district. So, um, I don't know if the board has any questions about him, or he's actually in the audience today, so.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Anthony?
If I can just say, like, hi, Mr. G. My daughter says really nice things about you behind your back, and I figured I'd say them to your face right now. But we just, I, I, I'm super excited about this shift. I know the middle school is a tough, it's a tough age to be at, it's a tough age to be over COVID, and, um, I can't wait to see what you can do as an assistant principal.
Hey, you like to say that? Come on, come on, you're here, about to step up, say something.
No, I'm, I'm just really excited about the opportunity, um, to continue to do the work I've done over the last 20-plus years at the middle school. North Haven has become my home. I didn't grow up here, um, but I've worked here longer than I, I, I lived in my hometown, and, uh, through working at the middle school, through coaching, through being a part of different community organizations, it, it really is a part of who I am. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to, to be put in a leadership role and, and to continue to impact the, the students in our district and, and connect with families and, and continue to, to move us forward. And, uh, you know, having the vote of confidence from, from Mr. Cirque and from the administration at our building, some of the families, um, and even, you know, colleagues over the years reaching out, it, it's just been great, so I appreciate it. I will do my best, I, I promise that to everybody here and into this board, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Fortuitous to have you. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Anthony Giamede as 11-month assistant principal at North Haven Middle School?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
So moved. There are no reports from standing committees this month. I'm ready for the superintendent to.
Thank you. So as I just said earlier, I just want to welcome some of the staff that we're welcoming to the district, uh, this year. So Abigail, Abigail Chamberlain is a new teacher at Green Acres. She's teaching kindergarten. Taylor Gigan is a 2-3 ID teacher at Green Acres. Jennifer Crandall will be teaching fourth grade at, at Clintonville. Mary Teresuk will teach, uh, fourth grade at Ridge Road. Andrew Laducco, uh, he will teach social studies at the middle school. Michelle Romanelli will teach career tech ed also at the middle school. Oh, let's see, his name. Mengi Tao is our new Chinese teacher at the middle school. Andrea Zulo will teach biology at the high school. Antonio Ramirez Avila, Avila, I'm not sure which, will teach Spanish, Spanish at the high school, and Haley Langivan will teach math also at the high school. And I do want to mention Anthony Mastriano. He's not a new staff member by any means, uh, but however, he's taking on a, a new role here in district. He's, uh, taking Jen Stewart's place as the interim director of student services. Uh, he'll be present at monthly board meetings, however, he's just had a vacation scheduled before as a, uh, before he took on this role. And we are scheduling a meet and greet, uh, to get to know Anthony a little bit at the start of the school year on August 29th, from 2:00 to 3:00, uh, right outside that window there in the courtyard. Let's see, new teacher orientation we have scheduled for August 22nd, and we have an administrative retreat, uh, coming up on August 23rd. Uh, our district administrators will participate in a self-leadership collaborative with a focus on mindfulness and wellness. It'll kind of be a kickoff to multiple sessions around this topic. The facilitators of this event, presented at the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, and we're excited to bring this, this work to our administrative team. I, I think they're excited to take part in it as well. An update for the, the community, and, uh, communication will be sent out shortly. The town of North Haven is going to have a primary election on Tuesday, September 12th. It will happen at each of the elementary schools, so we'll, we'll be closing school for students on that day. Just a little heads up, trying to give you as much notice as possible, but there will be a communication coming out, uh, very shortly. And this was just confirmed with, uh, the town clerk today, and I think a notice went out from, from the town as well. As I'm plugging along here, does the board have any questions? I also want to provide an update on M&amp;J. So the bus company provided summer, uh, program transportation for our students. Unfortunately, the transportation services to some of our families were not up to the district's or the family's standards. Uh, there was a need for numerous emails, phone calls, a few meetings to address these concerns. Moving forward into the new school year, Howard and I plan to potentially remove the athletic transportation from M&amp;J. Uh, we had a company lined up to do so. Unfortunately, the 11th hour, we, we really wanted to get this set by August 1st. August 1st came around, uh, we were waiting on a contract, and, uh, we reached out to the company, and they informed us they could not supply us enough drivers to guarantee us the service that we needed for athletics. So, um, we are going to return the service, the athletic, keep the athletic service, uh, transportation services with M&amp;J with an extreme amount of supervision, um, no different than we've been providing for the last 12 months. with an extreme amount of supervision, no different than we've been providing for the last twelve months with them. I actually had some hesitation around just moving one aspect of transportation from the company and going to a different one. I think it should be a package deal if the board ever decides to move with a new company. But I think we need to do our due diligence around that and really investigate it. And I was disappointed that we couldn't be more planful in that, and we had some expectations that were not met. At each of the board members' places is the July update from M&amp;J. This was recently agreed upon through the MOU that was executed between the district and the bus company. So you'll be receiving that each month.
Hey Patrick, can I just ask a quick question about M&amp;J? Can we, is there any way that we have the ability to make sure that all cameras are functional and all GPS are functional on the first day of school?
A hundred percent, yes, yes. And they have assured us that they are doing an audit, I believe, monthly to make sure that they're going to review the cameras, make sure they're up and running, and the GPSs are up and running on all type ones, type twos, and the vans as well.
I believe they're also having a meet and greet on August twenty-second, right? So that'll be a good opportunity to get to know bus drivers, et cetera. Do I have it correct, they're under new management?
So there is a new yard manager, correct, yes. Mr. Hipsher is still the COO, I think he's the chief operator, president, and then there's a new North Haven yard manager, her name is Heather Lake.
Have you met her?
I've met her.
Okay, so there's good communication there?
There is good communication, and there's still some transition happening between the old regime and the new. So I think that they're ironing out some bumps. John's been communicating with us often, and there has been an intermediate person who's been very helpful, his name is Lee. And I think he's made it a little bit more smooth for that transition. So I'm very hopeful for the start of the school year.
Will Mr. Hipsher be coming to an upcoming Board of Ed meeting?
I'm inviting him to next month's meeting.
So yes.
Will we get, one, sorry, one more question. Is this the format that these reports will continue to come in monthly? Should we be expecting one, two, three, four, five metrics?
So that is the first one from Mr. Hipsher. I'd like some feedback from the board if there's additional information that you'd like.
I would say let's start with this.
Okay.
So at least this is at a minimum available next month. And then as we look at it, that we can contact you and ask you to have them add something.
Good.
Thank you.
May I go to National Honor Society sign?
Yes, sir. So there's apparent requests recently made for the board to discuss the requirements needed for acceptance into the National Honor Society. The request asks for consideration to change the minimum GPA to a three-point-oh from the current four-point-oh that is needed to be accepted into the Honor Society. So I recently, excuse me, I recently sent the board the current requirements for acceptance, and I also placed a copy at each of your places tonight. I consulted with Dr. Dali and we reviewed the current requirements. And we believe that the four-point-oh GPA at this point should remain as the minimum grade point average for acceptance in the National Honor Society. GPAs are weighted based on the level of course taken and can't exceed a four-point-oh. So if a student takes a level-three course or an AP course, plus, acceptance in the Honor Society is quite a significant distinction for our students. So I just wanted to open that up for discussion with the board.
Can you tell us what the highest grade average possibility is depending on AP courses? Is it, is it four-eight, I mean?
Four-seven, I believe.
Four-seven?
Yeah.
I can verify that. So it's upwards of four-seven?
Yep.
Patrick, in terms of other districts and other schools, is this the same standard that they follow or sort of?
There's not, they differ per district. We are, Melinda shared that we are, I knew we were high, I believe we're the highest within the DIRG.
We're the highest within our DIRG.
Okay.
In terms of the entry requirements?
In terms of the GPA, there are other requirements that you need to meet. But as far as the sole requirement for the GPA, the four-point-oh is the highest within the DIRG.
Okay, so the next school below, or the next district below our district within the same DIRG, what's the GPA?
I don't know.
Three-point-nine.
Thank you.
So we're not far off?
No.
Well, that's, I mean, the DIRG D average is three-point-six-three.
Correct.
And the median is three-point-five for DIRG D. So, I mean, I do think, I'm pro rigor, rigor's great, love it. But I do think that we are, we're very high on the total picture between community service hours, leadership points, and GPA. It seems like, you know, our students, North Haven has, seems to have a disproportionate amount of rigor within our DIRG, which I think that's just something that we should probably discuss.
And just something that I wanted to add in, the proportion of students with a four-point-oh and for like the class of twenty-twenty-three was thirty-one-point-eight percent students, the year prior was thirty-four-point-seven. So it's around a third of the class each year.
So that's a good number that could qualify.
So that's, that's, so not thirty-four percent or a third of the class make it into the Honor Society? They have to fulfill the other requirements, and some may not want to be part of it.
But you have a good pool, so.
But you do have a good pool, correct.
What if the GPA was lowered, do you know how much larger that class, potential class would be?
I can find out if it's like you go to a three-eight or even a three-seven, we can run those numbers.
I think that would be important to look at too, because it's a great opportunity for students to be involved in this society. It not only helps them if they're college-bound, which I would assume many of these are, to be able to put that on their resume. And the fact that it's balanced in two other areas as well, so if it was only the grade point average, maybe you would want that higher. But you could have someone who excels in leadership and excels in community work and then just misses this because they don't have a four-point-oh. It would be, I think that would be disheartening. It would be nice if we saw if there was a difference.
You can certainly find those numbers.
Two-point-seven, two-point-eight would make a difference, yeah.
And I'm wondering, I apologize if this is an ignorant question, and I know we don't have a director of student services here, but does having a five-oh-four or an IEP, like, are we seeing a corollary relationship between that and GPA?
You see a correlation between GPA and a student who may have a five-oh-four?
Yeah.
So.
I want to make sure that we're not, like inadvertently, we would never do this on purpose, but I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently disadvantaging kiddos with a five-oh-four or an IEP.
That's something I don't want to speak to until I have some data for you.
Yeah, I figured, okay, that's fine.
All right, so you get some data together and we'll address it again next month.
Okay. Sorry, I have to pretend to be Howard tonight, so please bear with me.
The man has made it easy on the question.
Here we go. I will not, no, I will not.
So with Howard's departure tonight, I'll be presenting the financial report this evening. The report in the board's package shows that the district ended the year with unutilized appropriated funds of four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents, which equates to three-quarters or three-fourths of one percent of the sixty-point-two million-dollar budget. Upon board approval, these funds will be deposited into the Board of Education Non-Lapsing Fund, which is Fund Three Seven Three on the town's books. Once the funds are approved by the Board of Finance, the Board of Education will be able to utilize them as a C-FIT. I will plan to present some options and suggestions for the board at the September meeting around utilization of these funds. And at each member's place, there is an additional addendum to the financial report reflecting some recent changes around school lunches. They just, they came after, I wish Howard sent everything to you all, so I apologize for it not being in advance. So this memorandum that you're looking at right now provides information regarding the new State of Connecticut STABLE, which is an acronym for State Transition Assistance for Breakfast and Lunch Expenses Program. The program is funding full reimbursement for districts for free breakfast for all students and free lunch for students who already qualify for reduced lunch. So anybody who's reduced and free will get free lunch, and anyone who's full will stay full. In addition, this will add significant revenue to the program and keep it positive with respect to cost of goods and services. This does not change the fact that the average price charged, which is currently three dollars and six cents for lunch, will need to rise to that required by the USDA, which will need to get to three dollars and fifty-six cents for the next year and then three dollars and seventy cents for the following year. However, we have such a positive cash flow in the district that we are exempt from price raise, a price raise this year. So the board has the option to keep it at three-oh-six for this year. However, we, next, beginning of next year, we will need to make up that difference to three dollars and seventy cents.
Which it would be anyways.
Correct, which it would be anyways.
It's just that the jump doesn't go from three-oh-six to three-fifty-six to three-seventy-six.
Correct.
It goes from three-oh-six this year to three-seventy-six the year after.
Yeah.
So can I just, we have like about thirty-eight thousand available in the P and L after meeting the USDA requirements. I'm, like, this is the August Board of Ed meeting, families have already kind of put together their budgets. So to me, while I understand that we want to take a gradual phased-in approach, I do think that, like, folks haven't been given time to plan for this price increase for free and reduced-priced lunch. So I would be in favor of using some of that thirty-eight K to make sure that we can cover this year's price increase and then socialize broadly that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, lunches and breakfast are going to go up by a significant amount.
So.
Well, this year, we don't have to bet, right?
We have an exemption.
We have an exemption for this year.
Right.
So it'll remain at three-oh-six throughout this school year until next year. And what I would say about next year is, it's, remember, it's the state. So it could be, it could be anything next year, it could be three-forty, it could be three-eighty, who knows what that's really going to be in that twenty-four, twenty-five? But for the coming year, twenty-three, twenty-four, it will remain at three-oh-six.
So we weren't going to increment?
So it was just a, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it was an option to stage into the next, but I don't know why you would do that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
If you can get it for three-oh-six now, and it's going to stage to three-seventy-six anyway.
Yeah.
So why would you do that?
Socialize to people that, like, it's going from three-oh-six to three-seventy-six.
Yeah.
Like before the next school year so that they can plan.
And I got to tell you, I would never be so sure what it's going to be in twenty-four, twenty-five. Yeah, that's a hundred years from now, as far as, because the state's concerned. So I would say, you know, let's leave it at the three-oh-six and just move it forward, correct? So we don't even really need to take a vote on that because it's just going to remain the same.
Correct.
Let's do that, that's good.
I believe that concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Okay.
So can I put my questions on the budget or should I wait?
You, well, you can ask, but it's, I don't want to, it sounds convenient, it's Patrick.
I know, it's, it's okay.
You know what I mean?
But I got to ask, right?
Yeah, of course.
So.
I'm being honest, I can.
One of the areas we went over was one-twelve D, which is overtime. It looks like we had paras subbing in as bus monitors and custodians.
Just bus monitors, custodians OT is thrown in there too.
I was confused about that.
Yeah, they were.
Did the paras opt in to be bus monitors?
Yeah, it was their choice to do so.
And was it, was it viewed positively? Like, I think it's actually kind of like a great synergy to have people who are maybe somebody's para during the day and then making sure that they get dropped off safely.
And it's like a rotation to, like, people who are interested, put their name kind of on the list. So then it, either the building principals, or if it was summer school, they rotate through so that, you know, as many people who want an opportunity can have it, but.
I know bus monitors have been a challenge over the past year, so I think that's great. Is that something that we could, like, are we going to continue that in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
It's always an option.
Okay.
And the bus company has also hired a fair number of monitors as well, so hopefully less are needed. And we have more consistent monitors on our vans.
When we use our paras to monitor buses, how does the chain of command flow there?
Starts with the bus company letting the school know that the monitor is not available for that day. The administrator will put it out to the building, paras or sometimes the administrator themselves will ride the bus, depends on the availability.
Great, I think that's a great, that's a great use of our wonderful para professionals.
They know our students very well.
Yeah, I'm really glad we came within one percent of our annual budget, that's really good. I saved the capital project from the budget, the capital project projections from the budget discussion in January. Can you speak to how many of the high-priority items are left to complete? We had like six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars in high-priority capital items during the last budget discussion. And I'm just wondering what we have left in that bucket.
So the only, the only one that was completed was the removal of the wallpaper and the painting of the theater.
Okay.
Everything else remains. We did have an emergency roof issue at Ridge Road that ran us about sixty-five thousand dollars that we are currently fixing. You can see the scaffolding outside the school now.
Okay, so if we remove the wallpaper, which is thirty-five K, from the high-priority budget items, that still leaves us with six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-seven-hundred dollars in high-priority capital items. Have we added additional items to this list?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. So when we send over the four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars to the non-lapsing fund, are we going to send over another copy of the capital project plan, the five-year capital plan?
I would think if the board, whatever they decide to use the funds for, that we'll make sure that it's explicitly, that the funds are accounted for, however they're going to be used.
Right, not prior to their being moved over.
No.
They have to be there first.
Yeah.
And then obviously.
Okay, sounds good.
And then you're going to provide on September's meeting, some of the projects.
I am, yep. And suggestions in other areas, like potentially legal fees and things like that.
Right, yeah. That's all.
What's that?
Everybody else, that's all.
How'd I do it, Howard?
I'll leave that to Howard to describe.
Sure he's watching.
I'm sure he is, I'm sure he is. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report including the recommended transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that pursuant to CGS Section Ten Two Forty-eight A, the Board of Finance deposit an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand and thirty-five dollars, forty-five cents into Fund Three Seven Three, non-lapsing BOE account for unexpected funds for the Board of Education's fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, correct? Nothing for you?
I have, I do.
Oh, please, I'm sorry.
Our summer programs ended last week and they were very well received. Some highlights include a kindergarten school readiness session for our young ones coming into kindergarten in a couple of weeks. And the little ones were just so excited to come. We had initially set it up so that it would just be a shorter period of time, so they would just come in, do a few things, and then go home, so it wouldn't be overwhelming. By day three, they were so excited and loving everything that was going on. We extended it and matched it to the rest of the program, so that was fabulous. We integrated unified arts breaks in our elementary programs, providing movement and PE as well as STEM opportunities. And at our high school credit redemption program, fourteen students were able to acquire the necessary credits they need so that they could stay more on track as we start in the fall, so that was great as well. In June, I mentioned to you that we were applying for various state and federal grants. Over that time of the summer, we received forty thousand dollars for dual credit courses at the high school level, an additional six thousand dollars for English learner services. And Amy Alessi, our career and tech ed coordinator, submitted a supplemental Perkins grant, and we were awarded forty-nine thousand dollars there, so that was really great this summer. And lastly, over the course of last year, we talked about implementing the Certified Nursing Assistant Certification Path at the high school. And we're going to utilize funds from that Perkins Supplemental Grant that I just mentioned to help us with some supplies and textbooks. And we were also able to reallocate current nursing staff in the district to assist us with the teaching of these courses. And that was great because the nurse that we're able to use is already on our staff, familiar with our students in the district. And that person is going to be our district head. students in the district. And that person is going to be our district head nurse. So she's going to teach the CNA courses as well as oversee the district nursing program and still have a little bit of flexibility in her schedule. If one of the nurses in another building is out or needs some other assistance, she can go over and help out there. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on with our second portion of public comment. This public comment session is for anything that was included on the agenda this evening. Does anyone have anything you'd like to speak on? Yeah.
I'm Kristy Gill. I live in the Grove area.
Can you speak to the mic, please? Because I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I thought I was loud.
No.
You usually don't need it. Um, as far as the Honor Society, um, I just wanted to echo, I think going from four to three is obviously a, a pretty big jump and, and, and kind of three takes away the rigor. Um, but I do think when we're comparing ourselves to other DIRGs and sort of looking at the median and the space in between and some of the, you know, working in other districts and things, I do think, I see a lot of places that don't have community service in some of our requirements. So I would agree that lowering it a little bit and giving some kids some opportunities, um, that they may not otherwise have. And, you know, to some of the points that Marie spoke to, um, giving a little bit more opportunity, um, for us to have those kind of things on the R S A. Um, and I also didn't know the meeting changed. I missed the initial public comment, but I was, I was listening to some things and, um, I'm a big fan of the path of belonging and I, and I hope I can just speak on it for a second and just say that, um, I think one of the things that.
We're not taking any comment on, on the agenda. I'm sorry.
You guys changed the meeting and I just.
I'm, I'm sorry. Because if I do that, then I'm going to have to do it for everybody. So I, I apologize.
Does anyone else have a public?
At this point, I can't, at this point, I can't do it. But I appreciate.
All right. It looks like anyone else has the time to speak, but I'm the only one.
No, that's not true. You had, we have two different sections.
I know, but you guys changed the time of the meeting.
Yes.
I didn't know. So I rushed here when I heard public comment.
I, I apologize for that. I apologize for that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything to say on agenda item?
Hello. So, um, I'm here to talk about the, um, National Honor Society. I was the parent that reached out and taught me about it. I do want to make it very clear. I never said I wanted three point O. I also agree that that is very lower. I, I, my point was that the range for National Honor Society is three point O to four point O. And.
I apologize for Mr.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just like, oh, no, yeah, I thought that was a bit low as well. I was just saying that I think that because we are significantly higher than any other, um, high school in our district, in our comparable schools, in our county, that just as a suggestion of bringing us down to the same level as schools that are kind of like at, in our area. So that would be to the three point five to three point seven range. Um, I did my own research online, looking at whatever school had them posted. Uh, Lyman Hall, Wilbur Cross, Sacred Heart, Hamdens, Milford, Branford, Platte Tech, Amity, they all have between three point five and three point seven. And also significantly lower, um, significantly lower community service hours, leadership points, like the whole bar was kind of lowered. Um, now I do agree that, you know, this needs to be a prestigious distinction with kids that have succeeded above and beyond their expectations in the school. I love the fact that we have a ninety-hour community service or other schools, such as my nephew, who's in a very prestigious, uh, Fairfield County School is only thirty-five, only one leadership point, and they only need a three point seven GPA. Um, I do, I, so I support all the levels that we are right now, really except for the GPA one. Um, so right now we require, so for example, my child, um, because I just know her stats, has everything there needs to qualify for National Honor Society except for a four point O GPA. She has way over the amount of community service hours. You guys require two leadership. She has three right now. Next year, at the end of this year, she'll have four. Um, I'm, I have a feeling every teacher would say that she is a very respectful and very wonderful student in their class. And if she was in any other school in New Haven County, would have more than enough for GPA to qualify. So with that, it almost leads me to believe that as wonderful as North Haven High School is, and it's a fantastic school, in this one specific instance, she's almost at a disadvantage, being a student that is above and beyond every single category required and just below this one. Even though she is on her roll and, you know, she's an honor roll kid and she gets great grades and she, you know, is a leader in many different ways, she falls short. She can't put it on her college applications like other kids in other schools can, even though they are reaching the same levels. And those colleges that are looking at all these college applications, they don't know, or, you know, they're not saying, oh, this one's North Haven, this one's, is Amity. And, you know, and therefore that's why Ava's not on, you know, the, um, National Honor, because she's at North Haven. You know, they don't see that. All they see is, oh, this one achieved more than this one. So it does put our students at a disadvantage. So just bringing the GPA down to the same as everybody around us kind of puts our kids at a more level playing field, you know, even outside of high school with all the kids, you know, in the surrounding town and areas. So.
Do you have a thought on GPA?
Hmm?
Do you have a thought on the number?
I honestly, I think between three point five, three point six, which, uh, what Amanda said was kind of like the average with other schools, I think would be fair. Anything below, and you're right, then you're kind of taking away from the rigorous, like distinction of being a National Honor Society. But kind of being in the same general, you know, um, ballpark as everybody else, I think would be, um, appropriate. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It would be nice if the National Honor Society put some.
That'd be too easy. Too easy if the National Honor Society did it for us, but they won't do that. Is there anyone else has a question on agenda? Come on up there. Nope, wait a minute. Nancy's coming up. We'll get, we'll get to you right after. Yeah, well, yeah, you already said.
Uh, just a, a quick point about the, uh, unutilized, uh, funds from the last fiscal year. I think you mentioned it was about four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So you mentioned that the prioritized list of capital improvements is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So it would be a, a great idea, uh, I think, if you could also provide the Board of Finance with, uh, a list of how you might want to use that additional three hundred thousand dollars. Of course, you have emergencies and you always have to have a little bit of a buffer there to address things like the, the Ridge Road roof and things like that. But, uh, it would be really, uh, very, very useful to be able to make a decision because you really can't deposit that money until the Board of Finance actually approves it, um, to be able to say, this is how we intend to use almost a half a million dollars that wasn't utilized from last year. So that's my suggestion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Come on. You want to come up still?
Well. I'm Asian and I'm from an entirely different generation, but question, you asked somebody what their opinion was about the National Honor Society.
Right.
He said four point zero, correct?
We're, we are at.
We're currently at four point.
We are at four point zero.
So this person that you asked had a reason for saying four point O. That was one question. Other, my other question is, how many of our students are achieving that goal?
I have that right here for a question to be answered.
Or are they really achieving that four point zero goal, our students? And my third question, and I don't know too much about this, but what was the object of the National Honor Society initially? Or did we not follow those guidelines?
It's just, well, it's just to recognize academic excellence. Correct.
Academic excellence.
Correct.
That's what we're looking at.
In addition to community service.
Academic is, is the key word.
Right. But there are also ancillary things that go with it.
Yeah, but we're looking at academics. And I know that there are some children who work very, very hard to achieve that level of academics. And the reward, of course, is the National Honor Society.
Thank you. Anybody else like to, yeah?
Hi, Tim Gabriel.
Yeah.
Renee Lane. You guys know me.
I know, I know. Formality.
Um, so I just wanted to remark on just kind of like what a loss it is for the district to see Howard Wardlow. Um, he, he has a very tough job, as, as Joe and Amanda and a bunch of you have said. Um, but this is like not only because of the challenge of managing fin, finances for a very complex system with very different stakeholders from the students, uh, down to the town, to the administrators, the staff, the teachers and various contractors, um, everybody in the community as well as a whole. Um, but you also need to comprehend the impact of every line item, each dollar spent, and how it affects students and taxpayers and principals and custodians and the like too. And that's something that Howard did very, very well, um, in his time on the board that I saw. Uh, and on top of that, to do this job well, as, as Howard did, um, you need to be able to translate tricky and sometimes arcane financial information to the public in a clear and easy to decipher language. And that's really not an easy skill, um, to do. So that, uh, people in the community have a better sense of what's going on and why decisions are being made in a certain way. Uh, and in the limited time that I've been watching these board meetings, uh, I've seen other finance folks who may excel at one or two of these skills, but it's pretty rare to see all of them together. Um, so I wanted to just kind of thank Howard for his service for the town, um, and what he's done. Um, on the National Honor Society front, um, I would just kind of like add a couple cents to the, the discussion by just saying that, um, in addition to looking at things like, um, IEP and how that might affect scores and five oh fours and things like that, um, it might be useful to just kind of look at it from a perspective of just, you know, the, the folks that are getting maybe just underneath the four point O. Um, and if that disproportionately affects anybody, whether that be people of different races, people of different gender identities, people that are on free and reduced lunches, things like that, that nature, um, just to make sure that that, we're not impacting folks disproportionately by having such a high standard.
Okay. Camille?
Hi, Scott Greenman, Seventeen Cooper Road. I hadn't actually intended to speak earlier, but I did want to echo a little bit of what Tim was saying about, uh, Howard Wardlow. Um, I specifically want to call out the fact that in the give or take four years that I've been attending almost every board meeting and watching the Board of Ed budget each year, um, the position that North Haven is in now, as compared to the position it was in four years ago with respect to the medical insurance reserve, the special ed legal fund, the level of risk that we're at as a district is lower, I think, much in part, uh, due to Howard's, um, work. Uh, and I want to commend him and just generally say that, uh, it's a loss for our district. And he seems to have a position that, uh, isn't just finance director, it's also operations and HR. Uh, and, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to find another single candidate that has all that skill set. Uh, so, you know, uh, again, uh, want to give a thank you to Howard, uh, wish him luck in his next role and generally feel like, uh, we've got some work to do to, uh, replace that. Um, I would generally recommend a, a GPA of three six or three eight for the National Honor Society. I don't want to speak at length. I think everybody else made, has made those comments, but four O, uh, does seem a, you know, a particular high, uh, bar to set, um, especially perhaps for somebody who isn't taking a whole lot of APs where there are extra points allocated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one. May I have a motion to adjourn the August tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Next meeting, September fourteenth, six thirty here at the library.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.